Good evening and welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the June 28th meeting of the Albany Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Kent.
Here.
Commissioner Minotti.
Here.
And Chair Geeson-Fields.
Here. All right, and with that, our next item up is the, excuse me, ex parte communication disclosures. Are there any disclosures that a commissioner would like to, any communications that a commissioner would like to disclose? Okay, seeing no one, I will now close that item with no disclosures. Item number five is our consent calendar. We have one item on our consent calendar tonight, so I'm going to forego the usual explanation. And so we have our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes from June 14th. I have a couple line item edits, but I can just email those to you and/or I can just tell them to you right now if you like.
We can, we can go over it right now.
Okay, and then just basically, just a couple clarifications to my thoughts. The first item is page four, line 24. And the clarification was just to add to the, add to the end of the sentence, I believe, and the reduced head height in the driveway due to the new proposed arch over the driveway. Just to clarify, my concern was with the reduced head height due to the new proposed And page, page seven, line three. I just wanted to clarify what I was, the intent of what I was getting at with that when I was explaining things for them to consider upon their next submission. And just after the word "consider" to add added costs of building a story such as structural reinforcement costs, the aesthetic effects of adding the second story, and the effects to neighbors. Really, I just wanted them to, if they're going to use those as findings, to really clearly and explicitly kind of present that to us, whether it be giving us real costs or structural modifications, things of that nature. And those are the only edits that I wanted to add. I don't know if there are any other edits or comments from the other commissioners? Okay, seeing none. I'll take a motion, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. I'll move approval of the consent calendar with the modifications suggested by Chairman Geeson-Fields.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of June 14th, 2017 have been passed with those modifications. The next item up is new business. I think we have a slight change to our schedule order to accommodate for the presentation.
Well, Commissioner Donaldson, if the commission was interested, suggested maybe moving public comment ahead of that, just in case members of the audience.
You know, I don't know, we have a lot of people for the public hearing on the Evelyn Project too, so, I don't know, we have people here for the El Cerrito presentation too, so I don't know what to say. Maybe just stick with the agenda.
Yeah. I mean, I'm okay with doing the public comment period just to kind of let people speak and get that done with. So we will, next we will do the public comment period, and then we will follow it with the El Cerrito specific plan study session. The public comment period is available for anyone desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Under the Brown Act, the commission is only able to receive the public's comments since the item is not on the agenda. Therefore, such items will be referred to staff for their comments and may be included in a future agenda for a full discussion. Is there anybody who would like to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda? Ma'am, please. Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind speaking into the microphone at the podium. Will you just like to do this because we are recording this for the internet?
Okay.
And if you may, either after you're done, or at another time, fill out a speaker card and just give it to Ann Hirsch.
And to be clear, this is for something that's not on the agenda, so if you're here to address the commission on the Evelyn Project, that will come later in the meeting.
All right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's all right. And is there anybody who'd like to address the commission on an item that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, and now we will have our new business, the El Cerrito specific plan study session.
Our colleague from City of El Cerrito, Sean Moss, who's the senior planner with the city, has prepared a presentation highlighting kind of a big picture of the specific plan, parking standards which the commission had asked for, and then also a couple of projects which are in process right now.
Cool, thanks, yeah, thanks, Ann. It's a pleasure to be here, it's nice to meet all of you. My name's Sean Moss, I'm a senior planner at the City of El Cerrito. And, yeah, Ann contacted me because I guess there was interest amongst the commission on our parking standards from the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, which were changed quite a bit in the end of 2014 when we implemented that plan. So I just put together a short presentation, so I'll walk you through those standards, and then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So these are the goals of the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, and I put them up here because I think that the parking and transportation policies in the plan really address all of these goals. So first, strengthening a sense of place. Obviously, you know, surface parking lots are not a pleasant place to be, so, you know, we're really trying to discourage that type of parking and encourage other types of parking that bring buildings forward to the street and encourage their interaction with the public right-of-way and the public realm. And then returning on, ensuring return on investment. It's expensive for developers to build and provide parking, so by reducing the standards in a responsible way, you know, we can allow a greater return on investment where that may have been a challenge in the past. And in terms of encouraging practical and market-friendly development, one of the standards that's in the plan is that parking be unbundled. So that really allows people, individuals, individual renters and buyers of units to make market-based decisions on their own, whether they need parking, whether they need to purchase or rent extra parking, how much parking they require. And in terms of enhancing and humanizing the public realm, that really goes, I think, hand-in-hand with sense of place. And as I mentioned, you know, we're trying to encourage buildings that are designed at a human scale, that interact with the street, and encourage activity on the street and those kinds of things. And then in terms of catalyzing mode shift, the, you know, in as much as we don't subsidize parking and driving habits for people and encourage the use of, encourage people to walk and use public transportation and bicycle and provide amenities that support those activities, then people will shift their modes of travel to those types of modes instead of using single occupancy vehicles and private automobiles. So I'm gonna, I don't know if any of you are familiar with form-based codes that give examples of do this, not this, so I put together a couple of slides. Our form-based code actually doesn't do that, but I think it's, you know, it's kind of a fun way to look at things, so I just put together a couple of slides that illustrate the kinds of things we're talking about. It was actually hard to find images, I was looking for images that showed entrances to parking so that you could kind of tell where the parking existed in a project. And most people in their renderings don't want to show those things, so it was actually hard to find some quality images, but you'll notice that top image, that project really has a great interaction with the street. It has, you know, building entrances and tall windows on the street, you know, looks like it could be commercial activities. Even if it's not, it's something that encourages interaction with the building. And then the bottom one, maybe not the best public right-of-way, frontage example, but you can see the parking entrance there, so you can tell that the parking is hidden under the building or underground somewhere, so that's sort of what I was illustrating there. And then, these are some examples of things we're trying to discourage. I put this top image in because, I think it's an interesting example because the, that building on the right there is not a bad-looking building, actually, but if you look at how it interacts with the street and how far it is from the street, it really has no interaction, you know, it interacts with a, with a surface parking lot, which is also not the world's worst surface parking lot. It has, you know, it has a fair amount of landscaping, but it's still, you know, a vast sea of parking. So that's sort of what those, these are examples of what we're trying to discourage. So we have two transect zones in the San Pablo Avenue specific plan. Transit-oriented mid-intensity mixed-use and transit-oriented high-intensity mixed-use, affectionately known as Tmimo and Tahimu. I was, I was vying for better acronyms, but we didn't get there, so. Anyway, the transit-oriented higher-intensity mixed-use areas are logically the areas closest to our two BART stations, and the mid-intensity uses are areas in between those two stations and then areas that are kind of on the edges of the city outside of the station area. So the first off, so I'll walk you through the parking standards for the mid-intensity transect zone, and then I'll show you how the high-intensity differs a little bit. So for automobile parking, commercial parking, we allowed to go down to one space per 500 square feet, and that's, that is a maximum, so it's up to one space per 500 square feet of commercial use. And then there's also no requirement for commercial uses that are less than 3,000 square feet in size. So that, the way that works practically is in a couple of different ways. One is that a lot of existing small storefronts no longer have a parking requirement, so if they did have a small amount of parking, they now might be able to reuse that parking for a more active use. And then also, if projects design their commercial spaces in such a way, if they're planning on having smaller businesses and they design the commercial spaces in such a way that each of them is, is less than 3,000 square feet, then there's no parking requirement for that commercial component of the project. And then for residential parking in the mid-intensity transect zone, there's a maximum of 1.5 parking spaces per unit. And park, in both of these transect zones, you'll see that parking actually can go all the way down to zero. In this particular zone, it can go, if it goes below one, between zero, anywhere between zero and one is allowed, but with an extra parking study. So we would typically require a parking study to show, that tries to look at the projects, what the, what the impact to on-street parking might be. But if you can demonstrate that there won't be an impact to on-street parking because you've provided extra measures such as, you know, a car-share pod, or even more bike parking than you were required to, or free transit passes to residents, or things like that, that address the parking demand, and the parking study supports that, then in theory you could go all the way down to no parking. So, in summary, the way, the way I look at this is sort of as a range. The by-right range for parking is between one and 1.5 spaces per unit, and if you want to go lower than that, you can do so if you've got the data to back you up. And then, to address the reduced parking requirements, we increased the bicycle parking requirements. So for commercial uses, it's 1.5 short-term spaces per 3,000 square feet of commercial use with a minimum of two, because typically one bike rack is two bike parking spaces, and a minimum of one long-term per 10,000 square feet. And for residential uses, it's a minimum of one short-term space, one short-term space for 20 units, so that's typically guest-type bike parking, and a minimum of 1.5 spaces per unit. So you can see the required bike parking is quite a bit higher, well, it's, it's at least equal to, and in most cases, higher than the automobile parking. And then in the higher-intensity mixed-use transect zone, the numbers differ just a little bit. So you can see for commercial, it goes, it changes from one space per 500 square feet to one space per 1,000 square feet. Same, no requirement for spaces that are less than 3,000 square feet. And then the residential parking requirement changes to a maximum of one space per unit. And again, you can go, so the by-right range for parking becomes 0.5 spaces per unit to one space per unit, and you can go lower than 0.5 with a parking study. And the bicycle parking, whoops, bicycle parking essentially remains the same except that, except that the short-term residential, the short-term bike parking requirement for residential changes to one space per 10 units with a, still a minimum of two. So with all of that said, I'll walk you through a-
And, Sean, so all of these spaces could also be unbundled and are required to be-
They're required to be, correct.
No, okay, so anybody can use the space as well?
Correct.
Okay, mm-hmm, okay, all right.
So I'm gonna now walk you through a couple of projects, and I think you'll see the differences between them. These happen to both be in the higher-intensity transect zone. However, this first project is one, this is one of three projects that have been proposed by the same applicant. Two of them are in the higher-intensity zone, one of them is in the mid-intensity zone. They're all roughly the same density and intensity, so I think even though this project happens to be in the higher-intensity zone, it could easily fit into the mid-intensity zone with the height and intensity of development that's proposed here, so that's why I kind of gave this as an example. So this is at 10192 San Pablo Avenue, so if you're driving up and down San Pablo Avenue, you may be familiar with the former site of Robb's Auto, which is in the block north of the Cerrito Theater, next to Peppermint Tree Plaza, which is a little strip mall. It's on the corner of San Pablo Avenue and Lincoln. Was an auto repair use, it's now vacant. And the applicant is proposing 21 residential units in a four-story building. Their parking ratio is one space per unit plus one accessible space. That's a, that's sort of an ongoing conversation that we're having, is how to figure in the spaces, the accessible spaces that are required in the building code, whether we count those towards the parking requirement or whether we don't count them. And I can, I'll explain a little bit more about that in a second. And this project proposes a combination of surface parking and parking that's located in individual unit garages. They're both accessed from the same driveway behind the site, and I have the site plan, which I'll show you here. So this, you'll see, San Pablo Avenue is running north-south here, Lincoln is the cross street. You'll see the building is right, is towards the front, right up against San Pablo Avenue. The driveway and parking is in the rear. There's some surface parking spaces on the right side of this drawing, and then on the left side, on the first floor of the building, are some garages as well. So you can pull in that driveway, pull into a garage on the left, or pull into a surface parking space on the right.
Does this site go all the way through to the next block?
It does not, it goes halfway through the block.
Ah, okay.
So I mentioned the conversation we're having about accessible parking, so you'll see in this drawing, how many, well, might be two accessible spaces, I think. Also, there's electric vehicle, there's three electric vehicle spaces you'll see there. That's something that we require that's higher than what the building code requires. I can look up the exact number for you if you're, if you're curious. So the issue with accessible parking is obviously that it's required, and it's required to meet certain design standards and be in certain locations. What this particular applicant has told us is that they would like to be able to offer a parking space to every single unit owner. And so they, what they proposed is having one space per unit and then having the accessible units as extra spaces, so that those would be available for people that needed them, but that every, the owner of every unit would be able to, to purchase a regular parking space if they wished to do so. So like I said, it's still a conversation that we're having about how to count that, but that was the feedback that I got from, from the applicant on this particular project. And then this is the Mayfair project. So this is much higher-intensity project than the other one. This is located directly adjacent to the El Cerrito del Norte BART station. It's an existing surface parking lot that's fence roped off right now, you may have noticed it. This project proposes 223 units in a five-story building, actually, it's two five-story buildings. There's, this is actually a partnership between a for-profit developer and a nonprofit developer of affordable housing, so that's why it's two buildings. In order to leverage as much affordable housing as possible, they broke it into, into that project type. And all of the parking in this project, oh, so the parking ratio is 0.65 spaces per unit, which is, as I said, lower than the, what would be normally allowed by right. They are, so in addition, I think, to doing a parking study for this project, this project is going through a process that we call Tier Four Design Review, so that's intended for projects that don't meet all of the standards of the, all of the development standards of the specific plan. It's meant to provide flexibility and exceptions for projects that, that would like that in exchange for a public benefit that, or many public benefits that the project is offering. So in this case, so the city is actually the owner of this property currently, so we did put out an RFP for developers for this site, and in doing that, we leveraged as much affordable housing for the site as we could, but the affordable housing is also the, the public benefit of this project, so they are seeking some, some exceptions.
Can you say again on the parking, how the by-right works for this?
Yeah, so-
I thought it was zero to 0.5, you had to do special measures, but 0.5 to one, wasn't that by-right?
Sure, yeah, so if I go back to this slide, so yes, so it's up to one space per unit, and then if you go below five, you should do a parking study.
Point, point five, right?
Yeah, point five. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, so that, so the project is, yes, is consistent. I'm sorry, I'm not the project planner for this project, so I'm sort of learning about it as I'm, as I was putting this together and as I'm putting together the packet this week, but, yeah, thanks for the clarification. Yeah, so this, so, yeah, so this is 0.65 spaces per unit, which is what's allowed by right, and 0.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet of commercial space. And all of the parking is located in a podium parking garage that's located under the market-rate portion of the site.
Are you getting pushback from commercial tenants about the low parking requirement that you've seen, or is it being accepted?
So-
Certainly way different than what most of El Cerrito has now.
Yeah. Some, some commercial, some existing commercial tenants like it because it allows them to repurpose parking for other things. They no longer need some of the parking that they may have had. These are two of the first larger projects that will be considered under the specific plan, so we've, we've not seen implementation of any projects on this scale yet. So that remains to be, you know, a little bit remains to be seen, but, for example, we have an existing apartment complex with a little bit of retail in the front of it along San Pablo Avenue at Schmidt Lane called the Village at Town Center. And the Village at Town Center was very excited to learn that the parking standards had been reduced, which is going to allow them to build additional residential units, for example, over a portion of their existing parking lot.
Yeah. I'm sure that someone like Trader Joe's would find that unacceptable. I mean, they have, they have huge parking demand, and they use up a lot at the plaza, but I'm wondering what, say, Pastime Hardware or Natural Grocery, I wonder what, how they fit in with that ratio now as existing uses. Are they, they're around that, aren't they, or are they higher than that?
Just to be clear, though, I think the city's not requiring that they provide the parking, but they probably have the ability to provide-
Isn't this the maximum?
It, so it is a maximum.
Yeah.
But you also can go over the maximum, too. So there are allowances in here, I think through the Tier Four Design Review process, you can go over the maximum.
Yeah.
So you'd have to provide a justification for doing that, you'd have to show the public benefit of the project otherwise, but we, you know, we also didn't want to block very desirable commercial tenants from locating in El Cerrito because they couldn't get the amount of parking that they wanted.
I mean, we had pressure from Sprouts to, to allow plenty of parking, and it was done under a PUD, so there was flexibility there, but I think Sprouts got a lot of parking, relative to the standards you're talking about here.
Yeah. The, the other thing I'll say, another model, I think for, so what I've said is our parking is a little bit of a range.
Uh-huh.
And then you can, you know, there's a discretionary process to go over that range, and there's an administrative process to go under the range. Another mod, another good model of a range-type mechanism is the City of Emeryville. I, actually, I was, much like yourselves, I served on the Emeryville Planning Commission until somewhat recently, and when I was on the commission, the city, we, the city council adopted the new zoning, basically entirely new zoning code. And so as part of that, they adopted parking ranges, and the way they were formulated was that there was a, a parking target that was based on parking demand in an urban environment, and then by right, you could go a certain percentage over that target or a certain percentage under that target, and then outside of that, there might have been other allowances to, for exceptions, I don't quite remember.
I had a question. So I know that you haven't had a lot of large-scale projects actually get implemented under these standards, but did you model the, the specific standards that you adopted on, you know, any other similarly sized or, you know, otherwise comparable cities? I'm just, I'm wondering how you kind of arrived at the, the standards that you did.
Yeah, the, you know, I'm sure it was based on a lot of, looking at a lot of other examples. The, the specific, it's been a few years since we adopted the specific plan, so the process isn't entirely fresh in my mind, but I'm sure it was. We did, we did hold a couple of charrette meetings and input meetings with some local developers and the development community to get feedback from them as well, so, you know, I think it was with that feedback and the feedback from the public that these standards were crafted. So like I said, for the Mayfair project, all the parking is located in a, in a podium garage, so this is a site plan that shows the two buildings. The one on the left is the affordable housing, and that building does not have a podium because of the, the type of financing mechanisms that are available for, for affordable housing. It made more sense for them not to have a podium over that portion of the building. Instead, they've put the concrete podium over the, the right portion of the site, and so the parking for the affordable housing will be located in that parking garage, which will actually be below ground a little bit. I believe they are digging out the site to, to submerge that parking a bit. And I'm seeing that actually on, on two other projects. I had never thought that subterranean parking would, would make sense in El Cerrito, but in addition to this project, I've got it- in El Cerrito, but in addition to this project, I've got it proposed on two other projects as well. So you can see the parking entrance there on the backside of the site on Kearney Street. That'll be the, that's the parking entrance to that podium that provides parking for both residential components, as well as the commercial units that are located on the front part of that podium on San Pablo Avenue. So that's basically all that I have in my presentation for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Sean, when you said you unbundled parking for affordable housing, too, it's unbundled on all housing?
Correct.
Susan, didn't you mention ones that, the loans of the state?
What?
Can you speak? Yes.
You can't unbundle parking. I mean, perhaps in this model, there's some other arrangement.
So we haven't had to implement it on this project yet. But I, I was just, yeah, we were just talking about this the other day, and the idea that came up was, was sort of pricing the, you know, subsidizing the cost of the parking at the same rates as the various income levels. But I don't, you're the expert, so I'll believe you if you say it's not possible.
Also, on the unbundled parking, I'm curious, so do you have conditions of approval that get imposed on residential developments? That, I'm curious which way you've structured it, and if the presumption is, or the requirement is, that you have to say your, your unit is leased at X rent, and if you want to add a parking space, it would be Y? Or are you allowed to say, this is your rent, and if you want to not have a parking space, your rent is reduced? I'm just curious about that particular distinction, because I've seen it go both ways.
That's a really timely question, because I just wrote that standard condition of approval for the first time yesterday.
Okay.
So the way, the way I wrote it was basically that the, the cost of the parking shall be separate from the cost of the unit, and any buyer or renter of a residential unit shall be free to not purchase or rent parking.
So it sounds like you, the owner could go either way with how they write their lease conditions?
Yes.
It sounds like, okay. I know that's a very specific question, but-
Yeah, no, I think so.
I'm just curious how that gets implemented.
In writing, I was trying to be flexible and just get at what our goal was for unbundling the parking.
Right.
And Sean, you mentioned some of the, a couple of projects are putting the parking underneath, they're submerging them in the ground. Why are they doing that? It's probably a lot more expensive. Do they get more height, or do they pick it up with another floor above ground?
I think it is. So the two other projects I have that are proposing that are really maxing out the, the building height and the building envelope. So they might just be trying to max out as many units as possible on the site. One of them, I'm trying to remember, might be both of them. No, one of them is utilizing the state affordable housing density bonus. So that might have something to do with it also, is that they're actually proposing to go two stories sort of above what would be the normal height limit. So I think they're probably just trying to maximize the residential density. Although, it is worth noting, we don't have a maximum residential density in the specific plan, or maximum floor area ratios, for that matter.
Yeah, right. So the project under construction in El Cerrito Plaza, the housing project at the back of El Cerrito Plaza, now that was approved before, that predates your zoning standards.
Correct.
Do you know how many spaces that has per unit, off the top of your head?
I don't, but it's, I'm gonna guess it's, it's at least at 1.5 per unit.
Per unit, yeah.
Yeah, it's a much more traditional suburban model parking ratio, I believe.
Uh-huh, okay. That's what I thought, too, but I don't remember exactly. I reviewed the EIR on it, but that was years ago, so, yeah, okay.
Could you just kind of explain for me, Sean, by the way, I appreciate your presentation. I thank you for coming here to help educate us about what's going on in El Cerrito. If you could just kind of step back for me a little bit, and just kind of explain the general context, because one of the things I think we're dealing with, or trying to figure out, is this push and pull between parking minimums versus parking maximums, and which way to go. And so I'm kind of curious as to what, I guess, if you could just kind of give us a brief overview of what the old parking standards were, and how long ago it was when you actually enacted these new parking changes. And just, and I guess also, I think you touched on it previously, what pushed you in the direction of going with maximums versus minimums?
Sure. Yeah, so more traditional parking standards historically, I mean, if you, you know, obviously, if you go back to when there weren't very many cars around, there weren't parking requirements. But, you know, as soon as driving started to be the predominant mode of traveling to commercial establishments, in particular, then most cities adopted minimum parking standards. So the fear was that there wouldn't be enough parking for businesses, that that parking would spill onto the street and create parking impacts on the public right-of-way, and impact residential parking, and things like that. So parking standards typically set minimums. And they tended to be based on more suburban models of big-box retail and things like that. And then more recently, there's been a movement to, both to reduce those requirements, to not, not require as much parking if it's, if it's not needed, and then also, in some places, to set parking maximums, which actually cap the maximum amount of parking, with the, you know, the idea being, well, like I said, with the, you know, the example in Emeryville, they tried to create a target that was, that was more or less based on what they thought the demand was, but then allow some flexibility in that range. So you can still base it on the, on the demand. But as I, as I said in the beginning of the presentation, you know, with a lot of urban planning, our goal is to really, you know, strengthen the sense of place, and create quality environments, and design for people rather than for cars. And, you know, you can't do that if you're requiring vast amounts of parking. And in addition, you know, parking is, it's expensive for developers to build it, a lot of the times, especially when it's not in surface parking configurations, when it is, you know, in a podium, or stacked with lifts, or, you know, any number of other options, it gets more expensive to build. So if you can reduce that requirement, you know, you can, you can encourage development of housing, which is, you know, something we obviously need in the Bay Area right now.
And you're, and just correct me if I'm wrong, your old standards were 1.5 or two spaces per unit in general for residential?
That's correct. I think, yeah, it was, it was two spaces per unit, I think, for all units, two bedrooms or larger was, was the old standard. And I can't remember if it was one or 1.5 spaces for studio and one-bedroom units.
Okay. And the commercial was generally like one space per?
300 square feet, something like that.
Which is, I think, what we have now, or similar to.
Yeah.
And then, I also, I just wanted a question to ask about, you talked about catalyzing the mode shift. And I'm just kind of curious, if you give me some examples of specific ways that you helped to sort of encourage that, that mode shift. I'm assuming one is by the increased parking, bike parking standards, but are there any other?
Yeah, absolutely. So yes, one is definitely the increased bike parking. So there is, in every building, like this one, there should be, you know, over one space for every unit to store their bike. So, and we've allowed a lot of flexibility there. So for some of those, that, that could be in the unit, if you put a dedicated bike rack in the unit, could be for this other project, for this project, for example, you'll see in the, you can see here, is a, is a bike corral. So a lot of their bike parking will be located in that corral. It's a roofed structure, it's pretty enclosed, it's secured. And then all of the required spaces that aren't there will be located in the individual unit garages, where they'll have dedicated racks on the wall for those. So we allow a lot of flexibility. So the idea being, you know, there's a place for everybody to hang their bike, and hopefully they'll use that bike to ride to other businesses on San Pablo Avenue, ride to BART, which is only, you know, a short, very short bike ride from this site. Other things that we've done, I really would encourage you to look at the Complete Streets chapter of the San Pablo Avenue specific plan. That is, so one thing we did actually is prioritize transit use and pedestrian use along San Pablo Avenue. So typically, for large plans like that, and for projects, one metric in terms of transportation impacts that you analyze is called level of service. And it typically deals with the impact to auto travel, and the amount of delay that cars experience at specific intersections. So we mostly did away with level of service as a metric in the, in the plan. And we now look at a metric called multimodal level of service, and specifically, it prioritizes transit use and pedestrian use. So we really wanted to speed up the 72R, for example, up and down San Pablo Avenue, the regular 72 bus line as well, to encourage people to use those modes of transportation. So the Complete Streets plan includes a lot of, a lot of improvements at the bus stop areas and in the streets that are, that are specifically aimed at that.
Okay, makes sense. Right. I'm guessing, like, electric vehicle charging stations and other sort of aspect.
Yeah, exactly.
I have, I have, can I have, I have two questions, related. I think Anne hinted earlier that you might give us a little summary about sort of what, what's in the pipeline, what's coming up. And I really am curious as to how well your new zoning code and your new plan is, your specific plan is being received by the development community, and whether it really is triggering a lot of interest. I'm interested in that. And my related question is that, is how optimistic is El Cerrito about meeting your regional housing needs allocation by the deadline of whatever, 2035 or whatever? Are you optimistic, pessimistic about that? And how is it looking? Just a general summary.
So we're very optimistic about it. I was actually, we're actually, we're just completing a draft of an affordable housing strategy that will go to the planning, our Planning Commission in July, and then to the City Council once, with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And so I was just looking at that document today, and looking at the table that assesses our progress towards our regional housing needs numbers. And they're looking very good, actually. So I'm very optimistic there.
Good.
And the second, what was the second part of your question?
Like, could you just summarize a little bit about what we might see along San Pablo Avenue now, in the next three or four years, in real, in real development projects?
Sure.
What's in the pipeline that looks good?
Yeah, so our worry right now, so in, in the EIR for the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, there's a number of, once we reach a certain threshold of units, that's when the, the traffic impacts on San Pablo Avenue were triggered. I think it's 1,706 units.
Okay.
And right now, we're, one of our biggest worries is, is crossing that threshold before we can get the Complete Streets improvements installed.
Really?
Yeah. So we have, you know, the pipeline is an interesting term, because I think some of the projects that were, well, not, not too many, but there are at least a couple of projects that were analyzed in the specific plan EIR that are not in El Cerrito. But I think we've got about, almost 1,000 units, kind of in some stages at this point. So like I said, this project that's on the screen right now is one of three proposed by the same developer. I've got, I mentioned another, two projects by the same applicant, one of which is using the state affordable housing density bonus. And then the Mayfair project has another 223 units that you saw. So we've got, we've got quite a bit in the, in the pipeline right now. So our, you know, our hope is that, you know, you'll start to see these, these projects being constructed and breaking ground within the next year, and you'll really start to see a lot of transformation along the avenue.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Is there some interesting, you have a number of real small strip malls, kind of that are set back, 1950 sort of style. Are some of those, are they going to be redeveloped, or are they closed down, and redeveloped with residential and commercial?
Not so, I haven't seen so much those uses. Those, you know, those uses tend to be a source of income for the, the property owners. The, you know, the tenants have maybe been there for a long time, and they're collecting the rent every month, and they're happy with that. So it hasn't been so much those units. But, for example, the three projects that this applicant is proposing, one is, I said, this one is on the site of an auto repair business that's now closed. Another one is on the site of two office buildings, the one that currently houses the El Cerrito Chamber of Commerce, and another one that housed, the one next door that housed an office for a church and some other professional offices. So we've seen that, those two turn over. And then the, the other site of this applicant is the former Guitar Center site across the street from that one.
Are you requiring mixed use? Are all these projects mixed use with commercial on the ground floor, or are you allowing residential on the ground floor along residential, along San Pablo?
So that was another really key component of the plan, was to not require commercial uses everywhere on the ground floor. So we did it in very strategic locations. You know, we sort of, we, you know, what's existing and what we sort of envisioned continuing were, were commercial nodes at Stockton Avenue and at Moser Lane. And so, you know, for a certain amount of street frontage on either side of that, actually, so the regulation, that regulation occurs by street type. So in addition to these transect zones in the plan, there are a variety of street types. The two along San Pablo Avenue are San Pablo Avenue Community Street and San Pablo Avenue Commercial Street. So it's where you have the commercial street type that you're required to provide some degree of, of commercial uses. But even in those examples, only 50% of the street frontage has to be commercial uses. The other 50% of the site can be residential all the way to the ground floor. So of these three sites by this applicant, one of them, the one at Guitar Center, is partially in the San Pablo Avenue Community Street type. And so for that, they, this developer is not typically a developer of, of commercial spaces. So what they are doing there, what we allowed to do, consistent with the land use table in the code, is to provide live-work units. So we will enforce that those are live-work units, that there is both a living and a working component. So there will be some sort of commercial activity that hopefully will encourage activity on the street. But we still, you know, it's still allowed this developer to build something that was familiar to them.
Yeah. Well, that'll be interesting, how that plays out, because we've always felt here that, that in order to really have a complete street, you need to have some commercial down the ground floor, so that there's places for pedestrians to go into, and draw the to draw, restaurants to draw the pedestrians. Otherwise, you might just have an empty wall most of the hours of the daytime and the evening. We have strictly residential on the ground floor. So I understand it's a real, I think it's a real trade-off. And it'd be interesting to see how, how it plays out.
It can be a bit of a trade-off. I think design of the street frontage is really important, so that's why I put this slide back up. It's hard to, it's hard to see kind of in this rendering. But what you can see is that the, and the topography of these sites favored this a little bit, because the sites actually slope up slightly away from San Pablo Avenue, which means that the, which means they have level entries, accessible entries from the parking lot. And then the first floor of the residential unit is raised a bit from the avenue. And the effect that that has is that you can still provide large windows in those units, and still provide some degree of privacy to those units. So, you know, once this project is built, we'll be able to see how it's actually working. But my hope, you can see, actually, there's, I don't know, what's the opposite of a transom? It's kind of, you know, a little bit like a transom panel below those windows. And so my hope is that that provides enough distance to provide privacy to those folks that are in the units, so that they, you know, aren't encouraged to have their blinds and their drapes closed all the time. That they feel comfortable enough to, to have those open, which, you know, will foster some degree of, of relationship with the street, while still giving them privacy.
Does Caltrans run San Pablo Avenue in El Cerrito like they do here, or do you own San Pablo Avenue?
We own the sidewalks, but not the, the right-of-way curb-to-curb.
Ah, that's similar to us, I think, yeah. About the same to us. So you have to work with Caltrans if you're gonna do complete streets, and?
Correct. And we, and we did work with- And we, and we did work with them quite a bit in the drafting of the plan.
Yeah, they've been, become more flexible. We're building a cycle track here, so it's, you know, quite, I think they're getting more flexible than they used to be. Okay, interesting. All right, okay.
Thanks, Sean, for coming. I had just a question about the TDM program and how that works in relationship to the parking. It looks like there's a basic TDM package and then there's something that's, can be negotiated?
Yeah.
Transportation Demand Management, sir.
Sure. So the basic TDM measures are things that are already baked into the plan. So that's like the, the increase in bike parking, you know, the, just generally the location of all these developments in a very transit-rich environment, you know, with the, the rapid bus and bus stops close by and, you know, in close proximity to the BART stations, those types of things. The more, the more intense TDM measures would be required if you did need a reduction, a further reduction in the parking. So those would, you know, those would be things that you would look at in your parking study to mitigate any impact to the, on-street parking.
Okay. And did you guys look at any impact fees related to transportation if they were reducing the parking? Was that an option or, like, to example, to pay for the Complete Streets program that you guys have in place or want to fund?
Yeah, so we actually, we're in the process of developing impact fees to implement the Complete Streets program.
So I'm sorry, could you just clarify for me, what are, I think I understand the, the basic TDM package and the, the sort of carrots for that. I didn't quite get, what are some of the sort of actual things you use for the, the high, is it called the high-intensity TDM packages?
Well, so the, the more, the more intense TDM measures would be, would be implemented when you needed a, a parking reduction further than what was allowed by Rite. So for example...
I'm just curious, what do you mean by like more intense TDM packages, like higher requirements or...
What are the measures?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, so like I said, there's a lot of things baked into the plan already. And then if you needed a further parking reduction, so say you're in the, the high-intensity transect zone and you want to have 0.4 spaces per unit, then, then we would tell you to talk to a transportation consultant and prepare a parking study that looked at what measures could be implemented to mitigate any impact to, to on-street parking. So that might be doing things like having a car-share pod, providing transit passes to your residents, providing a shuttle to BART at certain times or, you know, I mean, there's a whole range of things that you could do.
And, and so then in your code, you, you keep it kind of sort of vague or open-ended so that they can sort of come up with whatever they want to. It just basically puts the requirement that they have to do a parking study and mitigate the effects, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
I just wanted to say thanks for coming in. I thought this was really informative and learned a lot.
I, I agree. I agree with that. I just want a last question here anyway. How many of your proposed projects are having their own project-specific EIRs done or how are you dealing with the Sequa process on some of this development?
That's a great question. So zero so far with project-specific EIRs. So we did do a program EIR for the San Pablo Avenue specific plan.
Right, right.
So pursuant to that program EIR, what we've been doing for these projects is preparing project-specific checklists that verify that the mitigation measures in the EIR address all, address any impacts of those projects. So we do, you know, we do look at things, what we, what we do is we have the, the applicants submit several technical studies with their applications that look at the, the specific traffic situation of this project and of this site or look at, you know, historic resources that are present on this site specifically. And we look to see if there is anything that wasn't addressed in the EIR that's present on the project site or, or for the project. And then if, if there was, then we would have to do some sort of, some level of subsequent environmental review, but so far we've not had to do that.
So the developers are finding that it added, it adds value, reduces risk, helps to expedite the process generally?
Yes.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Moss? No? Okay. I don't know, is this, although this is just a presentation as a study session, is this something that we open up to the public?
You certainly can if you would like to.
I mean, yeah.
I think there are a few people here that...
Okay, great, yeah, let's do that. I mean, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to either pose a question for Mr. Moss or just kind of bring up a issue or topic they'd like us to consider that's related to this, please feel free. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to?
Please.
I see, I see one person.
Hello, I'm Susan Friedland. I'm Albany resident, former planning commission member. And I think it's exciting to look at the potential of really creating parking maximums. I think a lot of the intention of the N1 measure when it passed was to prioritize housing over cars and public use of sidewalks and streets over parking. And so I think it's really exciting what El Cerrito is doing. It's very progressive and I think it's kind of the way, the trend of planning. And so I do hope that the planning commission considers working with staff to adopt similar types of policies.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, please. And if you will, afterwards, if you mind filling out a speaker card, we appreciate it.
I'm Sadie Graham and I live at 940 Pomona Avenue. And I just wanted to say that I support what the other speaker just said. I think that through the vote of passing the measure shows that the community is ready to accept changes to the parking standards that we've had already and that I agree that we, the world is a changing place and we can hardly keep, my generation is already, you know, sort of like behind the times. And I think that it's time to, you know, integrate that into how we, you know, become in the urban village by the bay and actually really do think, look closely at what El Cerrito has done because I know that they've worked very hard and we, they're starting to see the fruits of their labor by having development. And I think that we just need to prioritize the space for, to meet our housing needs rather than for cars. And so I just urge you to look a little more closely in being a little bit more progressive when it comes to parking standards.
Great, thank you.
I'd say thank you for your comments. I'm kind of old and stuck in the old ways and I, so it's, it's interesting that I hear your comments and I find them interesting from both of you. So I'm still stuck on the old way of doing things, but it's good to know that there are people in the community that are really interested in going farther toward parking maximums than I am, I guess, getting rid of the old minimums. I hear, I'm here, I'm listening.
Is there, um, anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the question? Please, sir.
Good evening, Maurice K. Catlett, Evelyn, Albany residence. I just want to bring up a, I suppose, a curiosity I have of El Cerrito's current permissions with building of anything underground, if it has to be on a certain soil type or with a bedrock requirement at all, and if Albany would be in the future concerned about that as well. I'm also concerned about the matter of bundling the parking with affordable home, affordable home, housing, as we didn't seem to in this learning session, or the study session, rather, get a chance to get a firm yes or no if we do have appropriate accommodations or permissions to unbundle them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if we're going to get a definitive answer in terms, in terms of the bundled or unbundled parking for affordable housing, but I would defer to our former commissioner, Susan Friedland, her comments. I think she's very authoritative and well-versed on this subject, so...
Staff.
I, I personally will defer, but, but for an official record, yes, I would say defer to staff and we can maybe at a later date confirm that for you. I don't know if you want to kind of just quickly touch on that issue of the bedrock? I mean, I think that's, I'm assuming just sort of a, a code and requirement for you or in terms of...
Yeah, so as part of the Sequa review, one thing that we require early on, I mean, we would require it as part of the building permit process anyway, would be a, a geotechnical study of soils analysis. And so, you know, that would look at, at those conditions and would make recommendations as necessary to, you know, on, for specific project sites.
Okay, thank you.
He had one more question for...
The gentleman came up?
For Sean.
Oh, was there another, you had another question?
Well, we're done with public comment.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the commission or our guest speaker, Sean Moss, on this topic? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the commission. Is there...
Yeah, Sean, I just had one question about, I mean, it was a pretty ambitious plan. It was a longer corridor than San Pablo and the city of Albany, but I'm just curious, and if you don't have an answer now, maybe get it to Ann later, but what was the order magnitude cost to, to do the plan in the environmental process? It was a big investment upfront that the city made.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that offhand. What I can tell you is the, the plan that was initially adopted was sort of different than what was envisioned from the very beginning. The plan started actually as a joint effort between the cities of El Cerrito and Richmond because we share so much of San Pablo Avenue to kind of more standardize development standards along that corridor. In, in the end, so we did, we did a lot of public outreach. We had a, a advisory committee that was made up of representatives from both communities, both cities, and a plan was, was drafted, which went to our city council. And our city council wanted to be more aggressive about some of the development standards. So in the end, we sort of went back to the table. We were preparing an urban greening plan also at the same time and doing some other work. So we sort of went back and, and kind of redrafted the plan according to, to the council's wishes and, and prepared the, the program EIR. Initially, that wasn't envisioned and that has turned out to be a huge asset for development in our community. But, so as, as a result of that, I'm, I'm not sure because it was, you know, it was kind of a very long process and it morphed into, into something different, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, unless there are any other questions, our guest speaker. Well, thank, again, thank you very much, Sean, for coming and presenting this. I think this has been a great informational and educational experience for all of us to, while we're going through this parking revision process. And at least for me, it's sort of opened my mind a little bit in terms of maximums versus minimums for parking standards. So I appreciate that, thank you. Hopefully this will be the sort of further development of Albany-El Cerrito working relationship with our planning and zoning commissions.
Maybe Emeryville, too, huh?
Yeah, hey, the more the merrier. Thank you. And so with that, I'll now move on to our next item, which is our action item, Planning Application 16-094, Design Review and Conditional Use Permit for a Second Story Addition at 1131 Evelyn.
Once again, this is Planning Application 16094, Design Review and Conditional Use Permit for a Second Story Addition located at 1131 Evelyn. Some background on the property. The subject property is a 3,100 square foot lot with a two-bedroom, one-bathroom, 1,109 square foot home built in 1920. City records show the following permitted work done to the home. A lot of the work is minor, but one thing worth noting on the next slide is that there was, there was roof repairs due to a second-story fire in the unpermitted bedroom and that. And here's a street view of the property as it looks today. As you can see, the window at the top there, it's not properly egress. So this is a cross-section and floor plan of that upper part of the home. As you can see, its max height, it's at seven feet and spans approximately four feet, seven inches. And it doesn't meet the current building code as far as compliance is concerned. The applicant is requesting design review approval for a 538 square foot addition to the second floor of the home. A conditional use permit is required to extend the existing non-conforming north wall vertically. The new second story will be a total of 805 square feet to accommodate a new master bedroom, suite, family room, bathroom, and two additional bedrooms. This will result in a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom, 1,647 square foot home with a maximum height of 23 feet. And here's the existing elevation of the home and what's proposed, a more contemporary architecture design. Conditional use permit pursuant to Section 2100 dot 030D of the Albany Municipal Code, a conditional use permit is required for a vertical extension of the non-conforming wall vertically. Residential site regulations require side setbacks to be 10% of the lot width. Therefore, a conditional use permit is being requested to allow a vertical extension of the existing non-conforming north wall. The non-conforming wall measures 0.69 feet from the property line at its closest point and 0.9 feet from its furthest point from the property line, where 3.1 feet is required, is the required setback. Parking, currently, there's no parking provided by the property. I don't know if you can see in this photo, but there's an existing ramp along the driveway curb cut. And here's a closer zoomed-in picture of that illustrating that. With the proposal, the applicant is proposing to add two off-street parking spaces in the side yard. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan illustrating landscaping improvements to the property to complement the design. We've received no correspondences so far for this project. The project is categorically exempt from Sequa. Staff recommendation is that the planning and zoning commission provide feedback to the applicant and staff. Staff has included draft findings and conditions of approval should the commission decide to take action. That's it.
Excuse me, thank you. Are there any questions of staff about the project?
I had one question. I, I couldn't quite understand what happens with the unpermitted space or how that relates to the second-story volume?
So we, I actually found out about it a little later in the review process when going through the permit history. So I asked the architect to clarify that and basically we just provided that in the FAR calculation to show that there is that space on the second floor, but with the addition of 500 or so square feet, it'll create a total of 805 square feet for the second level.
But it's not the intent that that's brought up to code or becomes...
Habitable.
...regulated or habitable space, yeah?
Essentially, it gets fused in with the new second story addition. So that's just, that was just added up for illustrative purposes, yeah.
So the new second story will be code compliant? It will just subsume the...
Yes, exactly, essentially.
Okay.
I had a question about that unpermitted second story as well because I couldn't quite tell from the plans where that was. So you, what you showed earlier was helpful, but I guess what I'm wondering about is whether that, the, the unpermitted part of the second story currently extends into the setback line and it looks like the answer is yes. Like, it's just a, it's, it's a two, it's currently a two-story, non-conforming structure with respect to the setback, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Couple questions. What is the width of the driveway? I couldn't read the dimension on the plan.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't...
The width of the driveway, I couldn't read the dimension on the plan.
I think it was eight feet. I, I looked.
Oh, on the site plan, I couldn't read. Is it on a different plan?
It looks like the driveway is eight feet, but it looks like there may also be some additional area to the property line. There's a measurement on the site plan that shows three feet, six inches to the adjacent wall.
Oh, and that's eight feet, okay, eight feet plus 3.6, okay.
Yeah, the survey shows 8.95 feet to the property line from the main building.
And so I understand this right, the house, current house is, overlaps the property line to the north, is that right? I'm looking at the site plan, zooming in... I'm looking at the site plan, zooming in, looks like the property line cuts through the footprint of the house.
No, not based on the surveyed map that was included. It's very close to it, but it's not overlapping.
The fence is on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, the fences.
Well, it doesn't make sense then, because it says property lines point to a line.
Doesn't look like it to me.
The chimney, or maybe a, maybe a...
The chimney, oh.
Oh, the chimney, yeah, the chimney.
Okay, okay.
Off the property line, yeah.
Okay.
But that's getting removed, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
You're right.
So, that's the...
And then, I guess, one of my clarification points, which might be for the applicant, but I'll pose to you, staff, was, I think there is a, for me, the plans, I think, basically the plans and elevations weren't jiving, where one was showing the fireplace for the new proposed, and the other ones weren't. I just want to confirm that the fireplace is to be removed.
I believe, based on my conversations with the applicant, it's proposed to be removed, but I'll let the applicant.
Okay, they can clarify that. Okay, are there any other questions for staff?
Well, I guess on the same point, because it looks like the roof is lined up with the chimney, so the roof will also overlaps the property line. Is that being pulled back in this revised plan? I guess it is, I can't quite tell.
We can defer that question to the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
I, just one question, since I'm pretty new here. I was just curious about this coming up for a study session instead of with a recommendation for approval. Is that something you typically would do with a conditional use permit application? Or is, is it specific to this?
Yeah, so you effectively have one of two options this evening. If you feel you can come to a conclusion, we've provided the draft findings and conditions for you to consider. But on a project where, you know, there's multiple entitlements, there's some existing non-conforming details, there is some refinement, you know, that may be required with the plans, we give you that option so that the applicant can come back and address the concerns that you've raised through your discussion.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, and are there any other questions of staff on this project? If not, I'll ask the applicant or your representative if you'd like to come up and, excuse me, present the project to the commission. You can basically just tell us about anything you think might be helpful for us in terms of understanding.
And I'd just like to make one quick announcement, since we have a few people in the audience. If you wish to speak on this item, we have speaker cards at the back. If you could complete those cards and turn them in to me, we'll get you called up so you can address the commission.
And, yeah, if you could just describe the project and why you chose to design it the way you did, anything that will help us better understand the project?
Yes. My name is Bill Wong. I'm the designer for the project. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What we propose is, yes, we've taken the chimney off because this chimney is so close to the property line, and it may be encroaching a little bit into the property line, so we chose to take the fireplace out, so it's no more chimney. So, that's to clarify that. And I believe in the back of that side, we set back additional one foot, just to be, you know, it has a little more space over there. Other than that, we basically take, taken out the roof and taken out the illegal unit and built in everything new upstairs on second floor. So, the addition is like 538 feet, square feet, and the total becomes 1647, and which is about 53%. And the requirement is 55%. So...
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
When you're looking at the design parameters for the whole thing, you've really changed the sort of style of the home. You haven't kept the original style, you're going for a more contemporary, a modern kind of look. Talk a little bit about why and what your thinking is along those lines.
You know, I drive around in Albany, I see a lot of new modern homes.
Uh-huh.
A lot, believe me. So, that's why it comes to my head, we should do something modern, and that's also the wish of the owner, the applicant wants to have something modern, and that's how we come about. And if you look at the existing home, it's not, I mean, it doesn't have a stylish that I thought that it can be reproduced, so we, we just thought that we should put something totally different, which is modern home.
And you're keeping the crawl spaces underneath the existing, the ground, the first floor will be the same level as the crawl.
Right, right. We're not touching, touching the downstairs at all, yeah.
Okay. And then I had a question on your plans.
Uh-huh.
It looked to me like your new second story has some windows on the south side, on the north elevation, but they don't show on the elevation. So, looking at your floor plan, it looked to me like there were two windows proposed on the, on the, on the north side, but I didn't see them on that elevation. And I wondered if that was, if I'm right about that?
Maybe it's a mistake on the...
One near the staircase, and then one on the front bedroom?
I believe we took a couple of the windows out because it's so close to the property line. Maybe that's, I guess, we didn't correct the floor plan then.
Well, we'd like clarity on that. It is, you're right, it is real close to property line, we've run into that before.
Right.
And I think it said somewhere, fire-rated windows.
Right.
On the north, on the elevation, it said the windows would be fire-rated. So, I thought, well, that's how you're going to address that.
Okay.
But I didn't see, but on the, on the floor plan,
On the elevation, yeah.
I see a window providing light to the staircase
Uh-huh.
And a window on the front bedroom.
I think it was a later, it's a later correction, I mean, the revision we did.
Okay.
We, we wanted to probably take the windows out because of the closeness to the property line.
Okay.
Okay, so just to be clear that we're all on the same page, the windows that are shown in the plan at the second floor north elevation aren't going to be included, the elevation is more correct.
Right, right.
And then I have a, I had a kind of, I'm sorry, I, if you want, if you want to tell us more about the project, you can, otherwise, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you.
Sure, you can, go ahead.
Well, I think a similar question I had was, in the elevation, you're showing, for lack of a better term, it looks like a sort of eyebrow roof at that north elevation, right at the floor plate line? That, yeah. And so I was just curious, because that wasn't really showing up in the plans.
You know,
Yeah.
That portion of the area, we set back one foot.
Okay, so I saw in the plans, yeah, it looks like it's, the wall is stepped back there.
Yeah, stepped back one foot.
And that's, okay, so...
It was one of the recommendations by the planner.
Did that show, did that show in the floor plan?
Could you go to the floor plan, the proposed floor plans? I just want to make sure.
Oh, I see, it might, yeah, I think it does, okay.
Yeah, we come in one foot on the...
We're talking about basically like this section right here, and so, okay, and so that's, that's that eyebrow roof, and then you're stepping the wall back that footer or so.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that, is that the proposed floor plan?
Yeah.
Well, it has a chimney in it still.
Yeah, and that's what I was getting at, where the elevations don't show the chimney, but the plans do.
It does, doesn't it?
And that window is in a different location on the, on the first floor also than in the elevation.
Yep.
And so, as I understand it, the chimney is going to be removed, and the second-floor windows aren't going to be on the north elevation.
Correct, yeah.
And the walls are going to be stepped back.
Right. We don't need the window because we have the window in the front for the bedroom.
Okay.
Right.
I'm checking my notes here. If there are any other questions or clarifications that any of the commissioners would like to ask of the applicant?
Well, I think along the lines of what Doug mentioned, aesthetic, can we jump into aesthetic discussion here?
Well, I would just leave it for questions of the applicant, and then we'll do public comment and then bring it back.
I had aesthetic questions.
I do think I might have one other question for you, that there's a railing on that, a porch on the front, and what sort of materials are you thinking of for that railing?
Metal.
Pardon?
Round pipe.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to know, great.
And then actually, I'm glad you asked, because I had that same question. I had another question where the staff report talks about states that the exterior will use a redwood, heart, fascia, and trim. And so I just, I see the fascia, but I'm curious where the redwood's going to be used as a trim material exterior.
It's, the trim would be only the window trims.
Okay, so basically, the window frame
Right.
We're talking about, okay. And then also, I'm assuming, and so please clarify, we have a requirement that all windows be recessed two inches, so they'll all be recessed from the elevation?
Yes.
Okay, those are my only questions I had for clarification. If there are any other questions, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
We may call you back up, but thank you. Is there anybody, I'm going to now open it up to the public, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the commission on this? Please.
If you have a speaker card, if you could turn that into...
Yes, yes, please, and if you haven't, you can fill one out afterwards, too.
First speaker is Yanni Overton.
Well, I'm the neighbor on the north at 1127 Evelyn, and I've lived in the house for about 16 years. And based on my experience with the various occupants of the house and with what I interpret as more than one developer who's purchased the house recently, because it has been empty for a couple of years, I have experienced landscapers coming in to remove debris and do various things, and the occupants themselves actually previously tend to treat the front yard, which is my front yard, as part of their property. This is kind of, it's worried me a bit.
Right. Right.
And this is driveway.
Correct.
So, by the color, it's somewhat disconcerting, because it looks like this is part of property. And because I've had the concerns and excuses about my front yard, it's worrisome. My front yard has been mowed multiple times without anybody asking me, and just recently, but it just introduced a lot of really awful weed seeds from all of the debris in the backyard, because, you know, the landscapers come in and they just do everything all at once. Plus, it's just disconcerting, and they've been pretty assertive with me when I've inquired. And it's only in the last 45 days that a stack of about three mattresses and piles of old tires and a bin of toxic chemicals and a bunch of plastic debris has been removed from my front yard. But, I mean, it was there for two winters. I mean, I did ask the Albany police about it, but it wasn't part of their jurisdiction here. So, I didn't complain beyond inquiring that one time, but people just come and go. I've had people open the gate to my backyard and go in and look in the backyard and do things. It's, it's concerning because I feel like they seem to be acting like it's their property, whereas my understanding, it's mine. And also, the survey map that was done would seem to corroborate that. The 0.69 feet from the property line makes sense to me, and that is approximately where my backyard fence goes. There isn't a fence in the front. So, I just wanted to go on record as saying that I'd like to know that my privacy and my property rights will be respected during the construction process, that I won't come home and find debris or storage of materials or anything like that stacked on that part of the lawn, which, that's happened repeatedly with different things, including yard debris. And also, this is an copy editor looking at these plans, so maybe I'm not reading them correctly, but the street elevation, as I mentioned, concerns me, and the landscaping plan is a little worrisome, because I think E-tree means existing tree. And those, those are the two trees in my backyard that are on the landscape plan, and there's bark mulch drawn in my backyard, or not, there is no bark mulch in my backyard, just by the way. And I don't know why that's there. And it, you know, I just want to make sure that in this landscape plan, this dotted line that shows the property line is definitely that house's property line, and everything on the other side is mine, because I don't understand why they would talk about taking care of trees, and then there's bark mulch in my yard. It's just a little disconcerting, perhaps that's just a glitch on the plan. So, I wanted to go on record as having that concern. And then, the other thing is, I've had a remarkable number of realtors ask me if I'd like to sell my house, and they all mentioned that this house next door is one of many you see in Albany that has asbestos shingles, 1920's house. And they, several realtors, including when I first moved in, mentioned to me that if it's ever under construction, you know, if that's going to be removed, and I take it it is because the new plan has stucco over paper, that disposal and removal needs to be done, one realtor said, under tenting. I've read online that it needs to be wet at least. I don't know what the plans are to do that, but that affects not just me, but the whole neighborhood if asbestos is loose in the air, because that's a health hazard. And living right next door, you can imagine I would have some concern about that. I'm not sure other neighbors are aware of it, so I just wanted to mention that, and I don't suppose it's appropriate at this time, I'm not sure, to inquire about what the plans are to handle that aspect of it, if that's something that could be addressed.
We can, I can address that after you're done speaking.
Okay. So, that's pretty much it. I just want to be able to come home and know that that's my yard, and if somebody wants to, you know, do something, that I should at least be asked about it, but that I'm, it's 16 years of seeing stuff piled up in my yard, and so I guess I would prefer that that didn't happen. I mean, it's a 5,000-square-foot lot, it seems like the materials could be stored there. And I only mention it because, you know, the best predictor of the future, et cetera, is the past.
It sounds to me like you've known all along that that was your, your yard, that you've known where your property line was all along.
Yes, my realtor...
Do you think that, do you think the survey when it came in was a surprise to the owners or previous owners when they saw that?
I wonder, when I asked the most recent landscaper who had mowed part of the lawn and taken out a couple of things on my side fence line, and I said, guys, this is my yard, so, you know, what are you doing? And they were pretty aggressive, but the person who spoke the best English, because there was some language barrier, so I will say that, he was quite surprised that he had just probably spent that much time and effort mowing somebody else's lawn. But that's not the first time that people have been surprised who are on the ground when I say, you know, this is actually my lawn. They seem quite surprised, and so I can only assume that that means they were told to do it, or perhaps they just overreached, but it's pretty consistent. So, I'm a little worried about these things, and I just wanted to get it on the record and get some reassurances about that. Thank you.
One final question for you, ma'am, if you will, come back up to me. In terms of the applicant's proposed plan, I know they're showing a fence that would go along the property line. Would, I guess I'm just curious in terms of your feelings, if you're opposed to that or in favor of that, and the possibility of, I mean, we could have a condition where they extend the fence to the sidewalk with a three-foot-tall fence to really help demarc...
Yes, frankly, I, that, I'm quite pleased about that. I mean, I'm sure we all have our opinions about large houses and upper... I mean, I'm sure we all have our opinions about large houses and upper stories, and I am now completely surrounded by them. The one behind me on the left and now on the right will all dwarf me. But that aside, I'm not objecting to the new plan. It would be nice to have it renovated, obviously, but yeah, I am worried about "That's my yard." So I'd like to know what kind of fence, obviously, but no, I don't have any objections to that. That would be fantastic.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one moment, though. Is there anybody, I'll let you, I'll give you a chance to respond to the comments. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the commission on this topic?
Okay. Maurice Catlett.
Hi again. Also a neighbor down the street. I know the previous owners of this house for basically my entire life, and I would like to first start off with wishing the new owner and developer the best of luck with a home that has not been shown a lot of love. Secondly, I also share concerns about the shingle issues and the asbestos issue, living also in a home built in about 1914, 1915. I am concerned about not only it getting into the air, but also in the nearby creek that forms as the natural barrier between Albany and Berkeley, as well as local soil as a lot of me and my neighbors do enjoy gardening within our properties. I would request assurances that the utmost safety measures will be put in place to prevent any of it getting into the air, soil, or water, and causing effects worse than an ugly Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the commission on this topic? Sure, ma'am. You have to come up to the microphone, though, ma'am.
And we'll also need a speaker card.
He's my grandmother, but I've been living there almost 50 years. But their leave is so nasty, everything, never cleaned up anything. So if you're going to build an apartment, house, whatever, they needed cleaning up a whole yard, otherwise, somebody going to get sick. It was terrible, people how live there. So I've been there already 50 years. So I don't want to just go ahead, you know, build a house. I want you to clean up a whole yard.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Okay. No problem. Thank you for filling out a card.
Yeah, my name is Shirley Jowell, and I live at 1143, which is just two houses down from this property. And it has been a really sore point, because I've lived in my house 18 years, and this has been a mess. People have moved in and out, in and out. So we on the street, I'm surprised not to see more neighbors, are delighted that something is going to happen there and that, you know, because it really has been a mess and dangerous. My point is that I didn't know about the asbestos problem, so I think it's really important that we address that tonight, that this is part of the plan of pulling down this place and putting up something new. And the yard at the back has become a wild refuge. There are turkeys, there are deer, there's all kinds of animals that have settled in there. So, you know, we're generally pleased that this is going to happen, believe you me, but the fact remains that I didn't, you know, know about the asbestos, and I think it's really important. So thank you very much. I will complete this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the commission?
Sorry, can we just, just for the record, we don't know that there's asbestos here.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a statement after everybody's kind of spoken to their words. But yeah.
The next speaker is Jennifer Adler.
Hi. I own the house just behind this house and in the backyard. And I just come to hearing, and I just find out the siding have asbestos, and I just worry about the air go to there. So I, the other thing is, I thought the house should have a setback from the property line, like four feet or something, but this one seems less than one foot. And is that okay to build something this close to property line? I just, I just say, I don't know. Usually, people build a house, they have a setback, setback from the property line, like four feet of, you know, certain rule, but this one seems just 0.69 feet. So I don't know, is it okay to build a second floor, can directly look at the neighbor's yard, and no, no chance they can, you know, they have a grow tree, and both sides have some privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the commission on this topic? No, seeing no one, I will close the, excuse me, close the public comment period, and I'll just, I'll just start off with a quick, a couple of comments. As Commissioner Minotti was getting to, we don't know for a fact that this property has asbestos shingle, composite shingles, and so I don't want to imply or assume anything. That being said, we can maybe discuss having a condition to have hazardous material testing done, if need be, but in general, I also just wanted to say, I guess for everybody's, I just wanted to say is that the state has very specific requirements in terms of hazardous material disposal, transportation, and care. And so I've dealt with this on many projects, and so if it is determined for a fact that it does have asbestos shingles, this, depending on the amount of asbestos content in it, the state requires various abatement measures, things such as tenting, wetting it, and whatever it may be. And so that's something that the applicant has to comply with because it's state law, regardless of what we determine here today. And so that is, the onus is on the applicant to meet those requirements and address those issues. And so hopefully, everybody's concerns about asbestos should be taken care of based on state code requirements for dealing with hazardous material waste removal. And so, so that being said, hopefully, I would, I would shudder to think where something was done sort of without following state requirements for hazardous materials and contaminating the neighborhood. And so I'm sure the city will make sure that the applicant follows all required requirements for that.
Can I jump in?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I want to, yes, what Eric said, but also, you should be diligent as a neighbor because sometimes contractors, even though under state law, they have to do things, they get out there and start doing the wrong thing, and so keep an eye on them, especially with asbestos and lead.
We do.
And so if there's a commissioner who'd like to start, Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I actually just, I wanted to ask if there are standard conditions that you would apply in terms of figuring out for sure whether there is asbestos and the measures that need to be complied with to make sure that state law is being followed?
Yes, we do have standard conditions of approval, and in general, I'm not going to speak to whether or not that condition exists on that property, but there are standards that are applied vis-à-vis conditions of approval in the building permit process.
I think part of the plan, part of the, part of the permit, you have to write if there's asbestos.
There's a declaration on the building permit application.
I have, I have experience with those. They were commonly installed 1947 to 54, something like that. They probably are asbestos cement shingles. They're quite common in the area, and I, I haven't had an instance where I had to have them removed, but I've had asbestos removed from my own home. And you hire a licensed contractor that can remove asbestos, and now it's been done so much in the last 20, 25 years that it's really a very safe and, and standard protocol that gets done and without any trouble. So it's a very routine thing now to do that. I suspect those are, they do have a certain amount of asbestos in them, and they, but they look like they're in decent shape, and they've worked great, and they continue to be very common in the East Bay.
And before we, before we turn to the commission for a full discussion, I realize I imply that I would give the applicant a chance to respond to any of those comments, if you will. I mean, if you'd like to, you can respond to the commission about those comments.
I understand, Commissioner, that asbestos is, you know, in, it's in a lot of houses, and it's a standard practice. We normally test it first, see if it's asbestos in it, and then if it is, then we just have to hire some appropriate contractor to take care of it. That would be the asbestos. As far as the property line, see, we did not do a survey until almost after we filed the plan, then we, the planner said, "Hey, what's your survey?" So we did the survey. Our assumption at the time was the property line is on the fence, which is not true. It's not on the fence. So we also talked to the owner, I mean, the new owner. We're going to get together with the next door and go over the property line issue. We are planning to do a new fence. The new fence will be right on the property line. So, so we, we didn't feel that we should maintain the fence, so we're going to bring the fence back to the property line so it's no, no issue on the who owns what. Yeah, so.
I know, that's more.
I'm sorry.
Yes. So that's what we intend to do. So we'll get together with you and go over it, and we do the fence. As far as, that's why we took the chimney out, because we felt it's too close to the property line. You know, we don't want to have any future issue, so we intend to take the chimney out.
Can you clarify for the fence, does that extend to the front yard, or does that just replace what's there?
Excuse me?
Are you proposing a fence that extends into the front yard? Because there's currently not a fence there, correct?
Well, that's something that it would be up to the owner to agree, what do, what do they want to put the fence to?
Up to, you, you work that out with the neighbor there?
Yeah, with the neighbors. Yeah, with the two neighbors. Yeah. We know the property has been vacant for a certain amount of time, and that's why we have new, new owners, you know, new owner bring new product to the, to the property. So it'll be, it'll be a nice house when we finish it.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring this back to the commission for a full discussion. Please, Commissioner Donaldson.
If you don't mind if I, you at least get started on things here, anyway.
No.
All right, let's see, a couple of things. First of all, it's nice to see an old property that's been mismanaged for a number of years be redeveloped, and I think we welcome that, and it sounds like the neighbors are aware of that, and we'll also welcome a new, more up-to-date building in the neighborhood. So I'm really happy to see the project come forward. I do have design review considerations. I'm kind of glad the staff brought it to us for a study session, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not happy with it yet from a design standpoint. I think we can do better than this. I do not have a problem going with a contemporary design, but I would like to see better detailing in a contemporary design. I'd like to see some more contemporary features, and I think the plans need to be reworked so that we have a better idea of exactly where the windows are going to be, whether there will be windows on the second floor or not. I want to make sure that the applicant has the issues of the, of the fire barrier windows worked out with the staff. We ran into that in a couple of other projects recently. I wouldn't mind seeing windows on the north side, but that we do need to meet the code there. I also don't think that I have a problem with the vertical extension of the, of the non-conforming north wall, and the primary reason I don't have a problem with that is because there is that 10-foot-wide side yard between, that the, that the neighbor to the north has on the south side of her home, that provides, you know, a good, a good, a good separation between these homes. My guess is that other homes on the, on the block were built with, with a close-to-zero side yard on the north side, and they kind of go down the lot, go down the block looking at it that way. So I think I'm, I'm okay with approving a conditional use permit to extend the, the wall vertically, but my big concerns are design review concerns over the detailing of the, particularly the front facade. And I, I wish, I'm hoping Eric can add some things, maybe some ideas to that from an architectural standpoint. I'm not an architect, but, you know, maybe some, some contemporary treatment of the, of the overhang of the porch, maybe some better detailing of the overhang of the roof at the very top. I like the design of having a balcony at the front, but I think maybe more could be done with it. I'm not so sure about the large sort of picture window style in the front on the ground floor, whether it should be that big, whether another window design might be more interesting in, in the way it would look. I, I think other things could be done, and I'm hoping that Ann and staff maybe can, could help the applicant come up with some better ideas, looking at, at some of the more recent contemporary buildings we have. I'm thinking of the one in Pomona, but there's others that we've had that have really come out very nicely. And this one just doesn't, from a design review standpoint, isn't there yet, from my point of view. So, okay?
Thank you. Is there another commissioner who'd like to go?
I'll speak.
Okay, Commissioner.
A couple of things that I'm not quite clear. The existing building on the north edge, there's not one straight shot, it's a little dogleg in there, especially in the northwest corner. Is the new building lined up with the edge that's closest to the property line or the edge that's a little farther back? So if you go to the survey, go to the site plan, you'll see the north-
They're going to keep the same foundation, I think, so it's going to be just as surveyed, huh?
Well, see, if you zoom in on the survey right here, right, no, site plan, the first one, right there in the northwest corner.
Oh, that's, that's the landscape plan.
Well, where's the survey?
I think it's the last sheet. And I think, it's a good point, though. I, I hear what you're saying. I think the landscape plan should be modified to conform with the survey exactly.
Oh, yeah, well.
That would be, that would be a good addition, I would, I would, yeah.
Okay, because zoom in on that northwest corner, if you could, and maybe, maybe the plans don't jive, and it's okay in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's a-
The staff report said it was .9 feet at one point and .6.
Okay, that's fine, that appeases my concern.
And it looks like the chimney is on, encroaches onto the neighboring property.
By a little over a half an inch.
Okay, half.
Sorry. Six inches.
Okay, so moving on past that issue, it's not a non-issue. The aesthetics that Doug was talking about, I absolutely agree. I think the, that awkwardly placed front window, it just hugs the north side for no real reason. It seems like if you're on the interior, that it might be flush with the wall. So if you had a drape, or if you had any furniture against the wall, you'd see it right through the window. Wouldn't be a very graceful view from the street. Why, why isn't it centered like most windows are? Even though it's a contemporary building, it doesn't mean you ignore, you know, architectural practices that, that really improve the function of a building. So I think it was, I don't think it was, even some contemporary doesn't mean it's simple, it's not thought through, it's just you take, you know, more traditional design, but you take the same principles, just work, rework them in a contemporary form. The landscape plan, I don't think was, again, not even a plan, because it's, it shows trees that aren't real trees, they're just bushes, and it shows two, three different symbols, but only has one type of bush that represents all the three trees, so it's, it's not really thought through or not done. In addition, the- that aren't real trees, they're just bushes, and it shows two, three different symbols, but only has one type of bush that represents all the three trees, so it's, it's not really thought through or not done. In addition, the details on it aren't quite right, has root barriers that are only 12 inches deep, which serve no purpose at all, if you really want to put one, you might want to put it 36 inches deep, or 24 inches. Other thoughts were, assuming that the landscape plan, as mentioned, is going to conform to the new property line, but if you're going to be taking out that existing fence, you're going to be working on to your neighbor's property, so you do have to address a little bit of the neighbor's yard, because you're going to be removing stuff on there, so talk to her about what gets replaced, what kind of mulch, that sort of thing.
If, either Commissioner Jennings or Minotti like to say?
Yeah, I can be quick. I, I share, you know, the, a lot of the same interests that the other commissioners have expressed. One thought I had is that, and this is directed at staff, I know we, we reviewed a draft set of new updated design guidelines for a single-family residential that included a component on contemporary design, and I, I know that those haven't been finalized yet, but to the extent they may just, they may be a helpful starting point for, you know, for some ideas, I, I thought that perhaps that would be something you could share with the applicant, as just indicative of, you know, the kinds of things that the city might be looking at for design. And I, I do, you know, I would like to see revised plans that correct some of the slight discrepancies, and that show what the agreed-upon fence might look like, just to put it all in context. But with respect to the conditional use permit for extending the, the non-conforming setback line, I, generally, I, I think I don't have a lot of concerns about it, and it's largely because it doesn't really look like it's that significant a change from what's there right now. So, it's not totally clear to me what the overall change in, in, you know, roof height would be, but I, I think we're, we're talking a fairly minor extension of that, that non-conforming line overall, and recognizing that, you know, the site just is constrained in that way. And I, I'm not an architect, architecturally, I don't even, I don't know what the implication would be if you tried making the second story conform, or if that would make sense at all, so I just wanted to offer the comment that I'm, you know, I don't foresee a problem for myself being able to make the findings on the conditional use, but agree that we should focus on refining the design.
And I'll just, I'll try to be brief. I, I will concur with what was said by the other commissioners, in terms of their recommendations. In terms, in terms of the non-conforming north wall, in general, I always give my little spiel, I'm, I'm not really in favor of extending non-conforming walls. I will make an exception if there are circumstances, as Commissioner Donaldson said, that there is enough of a sort of open barrier between the adjacent buildings, and so I think this situation applies to that. Along those lines, I, I would encourage you to, to make sure the chimney is removed, I appreciate that, since it's on the property line. And this, this is just my opinion now, but I also appreciate the removal of the second story windows, again, because it is on the property line, to sort of try to address those safety fire issues as much as possible. And so, I, I think I would be able to approve the non-conforming wall, given those things. In terms of the design, again, I agree with the other commissioners, I, I think in terms of, there could be a little more detailing, and so, I, I get also where the commissioners are talking about that front sort of picture window that's just punched right in the opening there, and I'm guessing your intention was to align it with the French doors above, and I think it's just, maybe just kind of looking at it again, and determining whether it's more important to center it on that, that first-story mass, rather than the, the windows above, which you'll never really see in a true elevation, when you're standing and looking at it in perspective, so I think centering it on that mass would probably be more important. And also, again, for that, I concur, that that does look like a big punched window, and so maybe adding a fattened up mullion in the, in the middle of the window, to sort of simulate it looking more like two windows, or just to give some kind of trim in between, so it's not a giant opening. I would also encourage you, as Commissioner Jennings said, to hopefully work with staff, and look at some of our examples of contemporary designs. I think you could do more with things like putting in possibly brackets at the overhangs, at the eve overhangs, to add some detailing there, and those could be a modern stylized bracket. I would also encourage, I was kind of hoping when I saw the redwood references trim, that maybe something as simple as just having a redwood two-by-trim that goes around the windows on the elevation, to give more materiality to the elevations. So, I'd look at, at things of that nature, and possibly doing a wood railing at the second story, but metal is also fine, too. So, hopefully, those, those suggestions, I think, should give you some kind of substance to go forward in terms of the design of the project. I would also, and then the last thing I'll just say, which I can't stress enough, to the designer and the applicant, is that I highly encourage you to, although I can't require you, I highly encourage you to work with your neighbors, to resolve the issues in terms of the property line and the fence, and I think, at least my experience seeing these projects, that goes a long way to, to work with your neighbors and come up with a compromise. And so, I think seeing whatever you come up with in the plans and elevations will help us, and then I think also just finally making sure that the discrepancies, as was said, between the elevations and plans are resolved, so we can have a strong set of drawings to look at. So, I think, unless there are any other comments?
Can I make two more comments?
Sure.
Based on other commissioners' comments here, a couple of thoughts, two thoughts. So, first of all, one of the features of the existing elevation you showed us actually is the chimney, and it is one of the more interesting visually, visual features. I think that chimney is going to go away now, because it is now, we now know, you now know that the survey shows it's encroaching. So, that's going to really change the way that front elevation looks, and, and even more highlights the need for some real effective design work on that. You talked about using some metal in that upper, in the railings on the upper balcony, maybe that same material could be carried forward and being used as a, an overhead support, or an under, under, under support for the porch, and have some of that same material tie into the front, I don't know, but take a look at that. That's one of my comments. And then Commissioner Jennings talked, mentioned the roof, and I looked again at it, and I realized this really is a flat roof for the whole building. The drawings look like it's very thin, and I, I would like to see, I think you should do a roof plan, and you, you need to know how that roof is going to be constructed so it drains. And it's going to be, flat roofs are an issue, they're a problem, they can be a problem, they have to be well-designed and well-constructed. So, perhaps a roof plan would be appropriate. How are you going to, what are you, what's going to be built up? How thick is it going to be? Will it add, you know, to the height of the building, you know, six inches, one foot? I don't know. And then where are the scuppers going to be, and where are the downspouts going to be? And can those downspouts become part of the, of the, of the visual element of the building? Are they going to be on the north side, and if so, will that encroach into the next-door neighbor's property? Those are the questions that I would have, and I think that you need to take a real close look of the roof design, in particular, because it's flat, and it's, it's going to have to be done well.
If I may, I'm just kind of, I'm just going to piggyback on what you said, so they do have a roof plan with the proposed plans.
Oh, really?
And, and they do indicate actually where the roof drains are going to be, and so maybe one thing is to just show the, if you're going to have exterior downspouts from your roof drains, maybe show those on the elevations, so we can see how that interacts. And my interpretation of the roof plan is that, because it's going to be a flat roof, which, I mean, there's no real, like, true flat roof, they're always just very...
They always have to have pitch.
Low, low minimal, and so, it, I mean, it seems like they're just going to basically have it pitched to both sides, with a minimum slope probably of like a quarter inch per foot.
Yeah.
And so, you won't really see any rise or run, but, but yeah, I think including the downspouts on the elevations might help us look at it, too.
Right, well, I stand corrected about the absence of a roof plan, but I'd like to see you put some more thought into it.
Yeah, no, I think your, your comments are well-taken.
Yep.
Can I have one more comment, too?
Please.
The landscape is very traditional, and you have a contemporary building, and you have this brick circle in the back, it's kind of a little mix, you might want to do the landscape with the same style of the, of the house, rather than kind of going back to an English cottage garden. Just a note.
I agree.
But I, I hope that gives you enough ammunition, we, I think, as the audience members expressed, we are always pleased and happy to have somebody developing property in Albany, especially sort of unattended or distressed property. So, I encourage you to, to keep pushing forward, and making these minor adjustments to the project, I think will help it go a long way. All right? Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask Ann a question? Should this be, what's the best way to approach on this for next time? Is it continued, or is this, I didn't see it listed as a study session, but what would facilitate moving it forward?
So, you could continue this to a date uncertain, and that would provide an indefinite amount of time for revisions to be made, and then we would send out new postcards to adjacent property owners at a future date.
You would, if you're correct, okay, good, good. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm open to continue this to a date uncertain, and I think a date uncertain is probably best that the applicant can have time to figure out how long it'll take to make the changes. So, if you want to, I'm open to a motion, this project.
Then I'll move to continue, Planning Application 16094 at 1131 Evelyn, to continue to a date uncertain, it'll be brought back to us, and potentially on the consent calendar, if it looks good to staff. Okay?
Thank you very much. So, you have our comments?
You want to, is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, your project has been continued to a date uncertain, with our comments for revisions, design revisions, and then please work with staff and your neighbors, and then work with staff to figure out a time when you can next present this to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess with that, our next item is the announcements, communications discussion?
Just one very brief announcement, on your next agenda for July 12th, I wanted to let you know that the haunted house temporary use permit will be coming to you for 2017.
What?
A haunted house.
Is coming in the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Oh, good, I'll miss it. I won't.
Next meeting.
Being facetious. I will miss the next meeting.
Okay.
July 12th, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, great.
And one, one last question, just following up on the, the discussions that have happened the last couple months about Orange Theory Fitness, is, should we expect anything on the agenda in the future?
I would expect something probably within July. There was an email exchange that we've had with the representative, and they've had some back and forth with Mr. Garner, the gentleman who's, who's addressed the commission, and I think they have worked on, are working on solutions, but it sounds like it continues to be a work in progress. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, with that, our next meeting is July 12th, and with that, I will call to adjourn, adjournment to tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought it was south of France.